For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpena City Council's Special Municipal Meeting of August 22nd, 2016. Call the order, please.
Johnson?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Sexton?
Here.
Walagora?
Here.
Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, I'd like to review the agenda and request that we add a closed session to discuss litigation and open session to take action on attorney's recommendation. So moved.
Set. Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Walagora?
Hi.
Johnson?
Yes.
And it will be at the end for those attending, you won't have to sit through that first. And then the rest of the agenda will be as is. So right off the bat, we have the River Center status presentation given by the River Center Board, and then we'll have public comment after that. Adam?
All right, well first, I appreciate the City Council and everybody here coming out on the outside to regulate scheduled meetings, but just appreciate that. Thunder Bay Watershed Interfertive Center, we'll call it the River Center, has been the goal of many members of the community for a number of years. To that end, a group of dedicated volunteers has been working hard to make the River Center a reality through raising awareness, fundraising, and hard work, to the point where some events have become annual traditions in the community. The Real Fund Ice Fishing Tournament regularly sells out about 1,000 tickets and is considered by many to be the most exciting and family-friendly ice fishing tournament of the year. Every year, the tournament grows in popularity and has started attracting anglers from all over the Midwest. The River Rats program runs every summer and has helped hundreds of kids learn about the natural environment while having fun. The years of dedication and planning by these volunteers have laid the groundwork for the next step in the process, obtaining the funding to build the River Center. It is expected that the majority of the funding is going to come from grants and foundations, but in order to obtain these grants, there needs to be some financial evidence of local support. To that end, the River Center Steering Committee has applied for nonprofit status and will begin raising support from local businesses and individuals when that is finalized. In addition, the Steering Committee has requested assistance from the city. Knowing all of the other important programs and functions, the city must also fund. The committee has requested that the city set some funding aside for a number of years combined with funds donated by businesses and individuals to provide the required match for the construction of the River Center. Roger Witherby and Judy Komenek have prepared a presentation to discuss the steps that have been taken, as well as what needs to be accomplished next in order to make the River Center a reality.
Thanks, Adam. I just want to take a quick minute. These people sitting in the audience are the Wildlife Sanctuary Board members, men in the back, and Brandon Schroeder, who's on our steering committee. And all of these people are just phenomenal, very hardworking people, and this committee is, the Wildlife Sanctuary Board in particular, is just, excuse me, a phenomenal committee. And I also want to mention that since Judy has come on board with the Wildlife Sanctuary Board, we've moved along much more rapidly than we had previous, and a lot of the progress that we've been making is totally due to her involvement and commitment to the project. So Judy, why don't you start off there?
Well, I'd like to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk with you about the River Center, which is a very dear project as far as I am concerned. One of the questions that we have struggled with is why the River Center? And we've been asked that question just a number of times. We can look at these very, very simple but very direct quotes here. Water is life; our river's life is our life. Wildlife Sanctuary is a unique part of the river within the city. And all of them speak to the why, but they are not the real why. I'd like to illustrate this with just a little brief story. When I moved to Alpena in October of 2012, I was house hunting, of course, and I could not find any place on the water that seemed to meet our needs. So we looked at a condo, and when we walked into the condo, which is at Duck Park, we were very happy with the condo, but the thing that really attracted us is we walked out the sliding glass doors and we stood and looked out over the Wildlife Sanctuary, and immediately we said, "We'll take it." And I turned to my sister at that moment and I said, "This is such a phenomenal resource. I want to do everything that I can possibly do to help preserve it so that it is here forever." And each of you sitting in this room, all of the members out here, everybody who has ever gone into the Wildlife Sanctuary, who has ever kayaked on the river, has had a similar experience. And that is why we need to conserve this beautiful wildlife sanctuary, which is owned by the city. And up there, when we look at that, the city's, this is a desirable place to live, a choice place to live and work. And so we are going to engage in conservation, and the way we do that is through education and exploration. And that is the why of the River Center. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Roger, and he's going to talk a little bit about what is the River Center.
Well, you know, I think I see it as a place where funding, running fall together. You know, it's kind of a place that is designed, first of all, we're playing on hope and hoping that we can design it as a demonstration for environmental sustainability with solar energy, maybe wind energy, geothermal energy, and it'll, the building itself will be an educational tool. And we're looking for, and we're gonna also, when we build this, be looking at lead protocols and lean heavily in that direction. It'll be definitely a showcase for native landscaping and resources. And you know, the whole watershed, excuse me, I'm gonna try not to talk very much, the whole watershed represents a five-county area, so we're looking at something that is pretty substantial in dealing with that. And the next thing I think we'll just move over to what happens, you know, really, a big part of it will be, of course, the interactive exhibits. So if you're looking to, you know, if you can envision a large interactive diorama of the watershed and pulling out dams and saying, "This is what the river would look like, and here's what would happen if these dams weren't there," and that kind of thing. Large aquariums promoting the native fish in the area. And the dioramas, you know, we're looking at how those are gonna be, or whether it'll be just electronic visions, or we want state-of-the-art kinds of things in there. It'll be enhanced experiences of the sanctuary, we want the sanctuary itself to be a classroom. And we, Adam mentioned the River Rats program, and we're already in the process of expanding that program to reach to different age groups and further on up the watershed. And we want it to be a real educational facility. And of course, we just, our artist-in-residence came, is your, excuse me, for this summer, and he's gonna be starting to work on that, and there'll be a lot of interaction with local artists, as well as hopefully national artists, looking at the watershed and the quality of that. We want this place to be a destination, it'll be a place where people are gonna wanna come to. It's gonna be constantly changing, because the river changes, and we're looking at that. So Judy, why don't you take over and do the next one?
Some of us get all the good questions. So how will we build the River Center? We have already begun the process. If you looked at the little history outline that I prepared for you, you see that we already were able to obtain funding from U.S. Rural Development in order to do the feasibility study a couple of years ago. We have begun work on the 501(c)(3), in fact, it had been submitted. Adam recently got a letter that yes indeed, the IRS did get it. When we will hear, if anybody gets it. So we've done a number of things, and all of these are in preparation for the work that we are going to have to do in order to obtain federal and state grants. I have begun to prepare a list of the foundations that have the possibility of meeting our needs and actually contributing to us in funding. We will, of course, be looking locally for investment by companies and organizations. And Ken and Dennis, who are our strong supporters there, are looking at industry possibilities who could partner with us and be contributing members to this endeavor. The grants themselves will take a fair amount of work, but we are pretty confident that we can get them. We have identified three or four that look like very strong possibilities. And of course, we won't know anything about that until we submit the grants. We will be meeting again with Rural Development in September in order to get a good lead on architectural fees that we're going to need, and also to begin to move towards the major funding that we are going to need for a construction grant. So that will take place over the next year. Then the other really good question is, how are we going to sustain this once it's built? And I know that this is a big concern and question for everybody in this room, not just for those of you who are sitting there, but for all of us. And we think we can do it. I put together just a little tentative first-year possible budget. I came up with $85,550, but Greg says I was too shy on the rent, and so he increased the rent there. So someplace between $12,000 and $24,000, we hope to obtain. This is for the first year of operations, so if this is true, and it seems to be, I've had several people go over it, I had Mary Deathmaness on our board, on our Steering Committee Board, and Suzie, who's just gotten finished doing a good brewery, so we've all gone over this quite a bit. I tend to be very conservative in my estimates, because I'd rather have it go over and get more money than say, "Oh, well, we went way over on this." So conservatively, we think we can raise about $85,000, $86,000 in the first year of operation. This will probably go a long way towards sustaining us through that first year. We will not have any full-time employees in the first year. They will be part-time employees, some of them very part-time, and so that will help. We are going to, of course, rent office space. We already have a commitment from here on Pines to move in and be part of the rental service. There's a good reason why I'm on here on Pines Board, you know, I want him to help us out over here a little. We will be offering workshops, conferences, and we, Susan ran a survey, Susan's also on our board, and Susan ran a survey, just a telephone survey of people that might show an interest in what they would do. We got a pretty good response that they would be interested in offering workshops, perhaps The building rentals will definitely be a go. We've already had people inquire about weddings, "When are we gonna build this so they can have a wedding?" And private parties, so that will be a part of the two. In the rental agreement or in the rentals for the building, we looked at what they do at the Aplex, and you can see that they rent it for considerably, the Aplex, the various areas, for far more than we are going to be asking. So that might increase and it might not. So you have that in front of you, and so we think that we can do this. We've been laying the groundwork pretty carefully, and I think we've got pretty much all of our ducks in a row. We now have a Dun's number, a Sam and a Cage, and all the rest of that stuff that we need to do to do business with the federal government, and once we have the 501(c)(3) in place. And then Bill has helped us out by deciding how we should do this, so he's prepared a little for how the people work on this, and then it will be turned over to the city as, once the 501(c)(3) has completed its work. So I think that's all we know.
Yeah, one of the things that we wanted to share with you, there's been some concern about putting a big building on that corner and affecting the aesthetic value of that corner. So one of the architects has put together a little model, and actually, the slope that you'll see when you pass this around is within inches of accuracy. This is a fairly accurate model. So there's long rapids rows over here, and 23 is out in front. And you can see that it's gonna be built into the side of the hill, and there won't be very much above it. And then the front of it, looking out, will be all glass, and there will actually be water on the inside of the building as well as the outside. So that flow that you see there is probably a slight flow from the geothermal part of the environmental sustainability, but that'll give you an idea about what we're looking at at this point. For sure, things might change a little bit.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm worried about the pavilion that is outside, which will be part of the entryway. And that is what we think we can afford to model the bridge. We can't afford to build a building like this, trust me on that. But we could have a pavilion, which is going to mirror it. And the architect lined that up so that that pavilion is a direct line of sight with a view of the bridge, and then you see the rest of it in the rental space there. It's going to have a natural grass roof, so that when you look at it from the road, you're still gonna be able to see the sanctuary and not much of the building itself. So I think we're ready for questions, Mr. B.
Okay. I certainly don't know what style of questions we might all have. I know from my perspective, I've been basically sold on the concept of the River Center since it began. And I'm not just saying that to flatter you. I didn't have really any opposition to its location, especially after I talked to people about that, and the educational value and all of that. My biggest question all along, and still is since our budget talks, is what are we, what should the city contribute to that as a city and a keeper of the taxpayers' money? That's primarily why I asked to have you come at some point and give us a presentation as far as where you are. So I still don't know what the answer to that is, and I've talked to Greg a couple of times. You might think I'm the type of person that just, you know, that would be personally upset if someone told me that I'm, and it's not so much that I'm wrong, it's that I just don't understand it. So Greg has given me his insight and maybe all of us at some point, so that's where I am.
Should we ask Bill just to go over his statement in terms of, because a big question has been, once it's built, who owns the structure? It is on city property, but is it owned by the 501(c)(3) in essence leasing, or is there something else that's better? So I asked Bill to investigate and to give his opinion, so it's probably something worth giving at this point.
I think everybody has their memo. Basically, it'd be my direction to council that, once it's built, that the 501(c)(3) organization essentially donated to the city. It's on our land and for insurability purposes, things of that nature, it makes more sense for us to own it versus not owning it. The next question that comes along with that, though, is assuming these folks do that and donate it to us, how do we sustain it? How do we keep it going? The general thought was that the city doesn't wanna be in the business of having another building that it has to maintain and not having adequate funds to do that. So what would we do for fundraising purposes to try to keep that going? Obviously Judy has come up with a budget there, so there, obviously, the building itself is gonna generate some funds. Some of the things that they already do, they'll continue to do. Obviously, that fishing tournament has become relatively large quickly, and is a very popular tournament, and I would assume that it would continue to stay that way. And then, you know, the last question is for the city, how much does the city want to put in, and how would we put it in? How would we use it for sustainability, whether it'd be some money earmarked for long-term maintenance costs, or whether there would be some money earmarked for yearly operational costs? And so basically, my recommendation is that the building be donated to the city, and then how much we put in, and that would be more of a Greg question than, a Greg and Karen question, than a Bill question. You know, obviously, it's a function of the budget, how much money we have there. One of the things that also allows us, though, by partnering with them, is they're going to be able to access more grants with us as a grant partner, a grant applicant. So, you know, obviously, with the thought of us having it at some point in time, but also, we're gonna be partnering with them as they apply for these grants and be a part of that process, and Adam's gonna help be a part of that process. I'll help be a part of that process from the legal end, so that we can get it built and hopefully get it built as quick as possible. But, you know, we don't know, I don't know off the top of my head what grants are out there. I mean, I know these folks have been investigating that, and, but, you know, for how much we can put in as a city, that would have to be a Greg and Karen question.
I've always liked that if we're going to apply for funds, there's always, as Judy said, looking at local support and commitment. And if the building's not gonna be ours, that's also looking at the city, that some skin has to be in the game. I looked at it as more as the upfront to help get it built, and I think with what Judy and the committee has put together as far as a budget and ongoing to look towards sustainability, is that, once the building's done, they donated to us, is that we would have, in essence, like a management agreement with the 501(c)(3), that they would operate the building, manage it with the intent of, through their budget, as you see here, of being able to sustain it and keep the doors open through the various funding sources, and also even put some money aside for, as inevitable, heating systems, whatever, things wear out, break, and you have to do, you know, repairs. The city may be looked at, maybe assisting with some of that, but I would say, if we get it, if they have the management agreement and they're operating it, hopefully, we're not gonna need anything major for a period of time. And that gives them the opportunity to begin not only keeping the doors open, keeping the facility in operation, but also hopefully putting money aside for future capital costs and that. So that's how I see it, and then, yeah, that gives them that chance for five to 10 years to be able to do that, and then, yes, if something really big comes up, perhaps the city may have to get involved, but the idea is as much as possible, they would be able to do the self-sustain. That's where the rentals do come in. I know when I was involved, and we were at the time looking at Fish and Wildlife, and they were interested, I submitted an application to them, or actually, responded to an RFP for providing a place of what the rents would be. And it was enough to keep the thing sustainable. The problem is, we couldn't go up with the money to build the building, and so eventually, they had to move ahead, and they are where they are now. But with other possible tenants, that would mesh with the mission of the River Center, and being able to share the facility, the restrooms, the kitchen, the classroom space, and so on, is that it makes a good fit and helps to bring those costs down. So that's how I would see it.
Thank you.
Are there more questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. How, correct me if I'm wrong, but when this first, when this project was first presented to the community and to us, it seemed more of a, that the city wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessary for the city to have monetary involvement. Has that, is that a true statement, or was it always kind of thought that at some point it would become what it is now?
I think it's always been that there would be some involvement. In fact, a number of years ago, money was initially set aside to create money again towards a match, that the city would have skin in the game. And I think we were looking like at $75,000 or $100,000, and I think we got it up to $25,000 or $30,000. And then budgets kind of went south. It was stopped, and then actually, the money was pulled back until there was none. But I think the council did buy into the fact that, yes, they would need to have some skin in the game, but that the majority would be raised through other means, but at least it would show the city's commitment, especially if the building was gonna be ours, and then by other local donations, individually, corporations, local foundations, it would show the overall local support. The idea was to keep, as long as possible, even to zero, the ongoing operations cost from the city, because we ran into those with the Old Ice Arena. Didn't have it really so much with the Civic Center, it's just that those capital costs got so huge that it was decided that it wasn't in our best interest to keep that going. And that's what we're trying to avoid, because we know that, you know, the city does not wanna get in a situation like the Old Ice Arena, where we're subsidizing it to the tune of $40,000 a year, just to keep the doors open.
And your description just a minute ago was very similar to the county's agreement with the current ice arena. And to my knowledge, they've been somewhat successful as far as the county not having to put money back in there, but it's been, it's been close a few times. I guess I'd have to, I'd have to ask if they've ever had to subsidize, but I don't believe that they have, but, and it seems fine at this point. But I guess we would have to understand that we'd be putting ourselves into that same style of situation, which I'm not completely opposed to. I just wanna make sure that we're all going into this knowing that the situation would be very similar to that.
And some of it depends on the grants, I think, especially with the county. The reason they're in that position is a bit, a half million dollars came from the DNR Trust Fund. And that basically says, "You're gonna keep it open in perpetuity, as long as the useful life of the building." And since it is the county's building, they're gonna be the ones responsible, so if it falls short, yeah, they have that. If we applied, especially for DNR funding at all, any time, we could be in the same, because we have that with our parks, we have, anything we get funds from them, we'd have the same thing.
One of the, one of the reasons that we had the new design done was to address the question of making this as close to 0% occupancy as possible. And so we're looking at geothermal. The building itself is designed to use natural lighting, to use natural heating, and so if we are able to achieve that, and the design appears that we would be able to achieve that, then those types of costs will be quite low. Dennis told us that when they built the, not when they built Noah, I should probably answer, but when they built Noah, they were able to reduce significantly the operational cost, the occupancy cost, over what Vessar Museum was. cost, over what Vesper Museum was, which had been built previously. And then Ken is redoing a building, a large building in Detroit where they are reducing the occupancy cost to very, very minimal. And so we hope to achieve that initially in this building. And that's the reason for the design. If you looked at the design at all, you'll notice that the whole front of that is glass. And those are windows that will open. And across the top is what's called a white shelf. And that will absorb light and cause indirect lighting throughout the building. And the block wall that runs down in the center will be a heat sink. You notice that in the middle, there's like a little lighthouse. That's, that, what do you call them? Ken, thermal what?
Thermal chimney.
Thermal chimneys, thank you. That's a thermal chimney which will draw natural air through the building from all, throughout the entire building that will be able to draw it. And those windows at the top are operable. So those are some of the considerations that we are putting into the new plan. And the water itself will be a discharge going back into the river. And where that black line goes across, that's all within the building. And that will be usable for wildlife. We can have some clipped winged ducks in there and some other things. The architect, who has a real sense of humor, said that anybody who is doing a presentation, we can have some flat rocks in there so it appears that they're walking on water. But anyway, all of these considerations are in the building so that everything has access and natural lighting and free air flow. Ken, Dennis, did you guys want to say anything?
We were talking.
Any idea at this point, and I know it's preliminary because you're just now certifying and qualifying for grants and such, but any indication at all as to how much longer the fundraising to establish the building itself might take? Are we talking two years, five years, 10 years?
Not 10. I'm getting too old. By the time I'm 80 in a couple of years, I want this finished.
Ideally, we would like to see us pretty well within three or four years.
Right. 2019.
Okay. And you feel that that's achievable on your projections?
I think so.
I know I'm the only one that's been rattling. I'm sorry. Do you guys have any questions or...
I'm just curious if you had approached NOAA at all? Because it seems like a pretty natural partnership with the sanctuary.
We do partner with them for activities. I mean, we participate in things that they do and they participate in our river raft programs and some of those other things. I don't think we're going to get money from them, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I think you could have a good opportunity to cross promote programs and be cohesive in what you offer to.
I should have thrown my Venn diagram in there. I have a little Venn diagram that we created that shows the interrelationship among the, Brandon helped with that too, of the interrelationship among the museum, the NOAA, and the River Center and how those will interact with each other and serve to help our tourist industry, but also to be this conservation through education and exploration together.
Of course, NOAA's been very generous in allowing the wildlife sanctuary to put exhibits within their building, which are there now, I guess as temporary, but not saying they couldn't be there even permanent as a link between the two facilities once it's built.
If you have not seen the exhibit we did at the 2014, that is at NOAA, it's worthwhile just to go over and take a look at it because it really demonstrates what we hope to achieve in the River Center. I'm sorry.
Ian Heath, Roger had mentioned it. Maybe Dennis can answer. But are you fairly certain that you can become a LEED certified building with that design?
We've talked about that at length. And the cost to certify a building is becoming extraordinarily high. So the trend has been to do everything to certify but not go through the process. And I've done three, four projects in Alpena already. And I think the last time the certification cost was probably 25% of the building cost. And it's just a matter of extensive, you know, it's okay if you've got a $20 million job, spend $100,000 to certify. But if you've got a $1 billion job, you've got to spend $100,000. That's where it tips it over. The protocols are becoming, and for the right reasons, what they're trying to do is lock down the certainty of the savings and the fact that you're using local materials. And, you know, we've gone through this a number of times. In our area, we report to it because we have concrete manufacturers here. We have a lot of wooden products. So it took us in the last case, we bought a small thing from Home Depot. It took us two years to get the paperwork through that facility so that we could finish our forms. Now, if anybody's fault, probably not, because of the certification. So I think we would take an approach that would generally reflect the optimum, probably in the gold range, which is what NOAA project is. The last project we did for them was just certified. And we got a couple of silvers and downed as well. So again, that's the obstacle. Now, maybe we find some really enthusiastic environmental entity that'll fund that. So I wouldn't say we shouldn't do that because I think the construction and design protocols would mirror it anyway. It'd be another funding.
Thank you.
Judy touched on, were you done? Judy touched on this, but from the start, it's been, for me, that I sit on this committee and did before I was on city council. I'm thrilled to be able to continue it. But the triangle that we've created, the museum, NOAA, the River Center, is such an attraction for anybody who's coming anywhere close to Alpena. I know the tourists will come. I know they will. And I think we can see considerable funding from that. And I also, when asked the question, why, as we all have been asked, for me, it's who we are. The River Center exemplifies who and what Alpena is. It touches on everything we hold near and dear. And I'm thrilled to be a part, just a very tiny part of it. I'm thrilled to see that it's moving forward. And I feel we should support it. Just put our shoulders behind it and support it. It'll be a good project.
Yeah. And I mirror Susan's comments as well. You know, if you look at what you think of when you think of Alpena, you always think of the waterfront, the marina, and the River Center. Or the river, no, the River Center. So you can tell I'm kind of excited about the project as well. And I appreciate you taking the time to come in and go over this. You know, I wrote down here in something, mark on the calendars, 2019. I'd really like to see that accomplished. So, you know, at least from my seat, I'm going to do everything I can to do what we can to help that happen.
And we'll continue to do everything we can.
And I agree with what everyone has said. And I've been part of the planning commission. Greg would give us updates on the ongoing efforts that this committee has done for years. I agree with this project. I think it'll be a fantastic addition to the city. And can't wait. Can't wait.
And Bernie, who started the River Center, the sanctuary, a long time ago, she and Gordy have agreed to be the honorary chairs of the fundraising campaign. We're still looking, we have a couple of prospects for the active campaign chairs, but they have agreed to be the honorarys. And we are privileged to help them do that.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time out of your evening to come and present that and answer all the crazy questions.
Do you have any more questions coming along or as you overlook this over?
Certainly. Thank you. I mean, we adjourn to close session to discuss litigation and possible action and attorney recommendations.
Second.
Yes.
Sexton?
Yes.
Olga?
Johnson?
Yes.
Nielsen?
Yes.